Pledge of will.
All minds clear. Oh heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much you have us here together, Lord. Bless each one of our council member and our members of city council. Lord, I thank you for all that you have done for the sixth word and all the words here, this body. Lord bless everyone, Lord. Touch our peoples in our city, Lord. Allow them to come together as one, Lord. Allow us all to be together as one here tonight, Lord. Be on one accord and continue blessing our great city of Lima in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of will. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tebbin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend dear.
And Mr. Nixon.
Is there any amendments? Yes, there are. I move that we amend the tonight's agenda to include Communication Number 14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Eight to nothing.
Seven.
Seven. We have no scheduled public hearings. There's no privilege of the floor. The consent calendar.
Madam President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that Item A be received, filed, and approved. Item B, C, and D be received and filed. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Items B, C, and D be received and filed and Item A be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number One.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place demolition assessments.
Madam President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number One be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number One be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Two.
From the Director of Audit Services regarding legislation regarding contributions to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension.
Madam President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Two be received and filed. That legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Three.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Hazmat IQ.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Three receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Three be received and filed. That legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Four.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Setfen Corporation.
Madam President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Four receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Five.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to contract for the Wales Avenue Waterline Project.
Madam President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed.
Second.
It's been, there's a motion to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Six.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to submit a transportation alternative application to ODOT.
Mrs. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Six be received and filed. That legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with ODOT for purchasing services.
Madam President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Seven be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Eight.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to execute a safe routes to school application for city schools.
Madam President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Eight be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding a request for financial assistance from the Ohio Rail Development Commission.
Madam President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Nine be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Ten.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place property maintenance tax assessments.
Madam President. Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Ten be received and filed. That legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Eleven.
From Square Fair Inc. requesting legislation to hold the square fair for 2013.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Eleven be received and filed and the law director will prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Eleven be received and filed and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Twelve.
From the Mayor regarding appointments to the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Twelve be received and filed.
Second.
And approved.
And approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Twelve be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Thirteen.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Madam President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that Communication Number Thirteen be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Thirteen be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication Number Fourteen.
From Chief Martin regarding liquor permits.
Madam President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Fourteen be received, filed, and referred to the Safety Service Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Communication Number Fourteen be received and filed and referred to the Safety Service Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Reports of officials.
Madam President. The, Mr. Baxter is not yet here. He's not expected until 7:30, so if this portion can be held until he arrives, that'd be best.
Thank you. Reports of committees. Mr. Neper. Public Works.
Madam President. We have a report of the Public Works Committee on March 25th, 2013, to continue discussion on the maintenance of the downtown streetscape. Motion was made to approve the maintenance plan as submitted and approved by a vote of two to one. I submit this committee report and ask it be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The Public Works Committee Report has been moved and seconded to receive, file, and approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The Human Resource Committee met March 18th. I would be giving that report. You all have a copy of it with attachments included that were provided at that meeting. Major Protsman had a, an overview of the cadet program that he submitted and as the cadet program concept paper and then the patrol services memo outlining the responsibilities of what that lieutenant would do. Otherwise, we, the committee moved that these, that Major Protsman researched the possibilities and the committee would reconvene to hear the outcome of his research. I move that this committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Human Resource Committee Report be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Community and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Adams.
Thank you. The committee met on March 19th at 5:30 in the council chamber conference room. The subject was junk and abandoned autos. The meeting was at 5:30. It was referred back in January by Counselor Tebbin to do a review of the ordinances and the state requirements as well. And a discussion, quite a few discussions came up out of that. And Major Swagert, recognized Major Cortez who gave some stats from October 12th through March of 2013. Again, a discussion followed and the committee asked that Ms. Odom, Mr. Geiger, LPD meet and report back to the committee. And as everyone has received a copy of this, a motion was made by McLean and seconded by Counselor Glenn and adjourned 6:15. I respectfully submit and ask that the committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Community and Economic Development Committee Report be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Glenn.
First of all, I want to thank you guys, the committee, and also Mr. Tebbin for bringing this up. It's been a long overdue problem in certain areas of the city. And what's exciting about it though, when I was in Walmarts, some people said, you know, they were saying they glad to see that we're doing something about these cars. You know, I've been to cars around and I know our policy, our legislation, our ordinance needs some teeth in it a little bit. But one young lady was telling me about how our car sat so long and no one doing anything about it. Rest assured that, like I told before, we are doing something about it. And I'm glad Ms. Adams and Mr. Tebbin had brought this up and we moving forward on this. So, hope arrive and we just going, trying to look into it and hopefully that we can look at at least six months down the road and see how things progressing because this is a big issue. And we need to deal with it and we are dealing with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Any other discussion? All in favor of the Community Economic Development Committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Utilities meeting on March 19th. Mr. McLean.
Madam President. Thank you. I'm going to read mine real slow so we get an appointment.
So Mr. Baxter can get here.
Really, all we had was an informational meeting in the Cambridge building to get an idea of what so counselors could get, an idea of what work was currently being done and what the scope of the work was to be finished in the Cambridge building and the service center for the utilities. I hope it enlightened a few eyes, give them some, some ideas of what it all entailed and some of their ideas. And we got to speak with the engineers and the construction people that were actually doing the repairs and got to see firsthand what some of the stuff that they've done. And it was nothing more than informational at our point. I think it, it was something so that we can have another one of these in the future before they're done so that, so that we get a better idea of the scope of what they had to do and what they still need to do. And it gave us a little assurance that they were looking at it from top to bottom. I, I think that our concerns were that we wanted to make sure those buildings were viable for a 10 to 20 year period. And I think that the answer to the questions that most of them gave was that it was or it will be once they're done. So, I would submit this report and receive, file, and approve it if we would. I would.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the utilities meeting, that the utilities committee report be received, filed, and approved. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just have a couple of things to say. First of all, I'm glad we had that meeting there, Mr. McLean, because that gave us on hand. This is our second on-hand meeting. Ms. Adams had one and you had one. And I think it's great because we was there to talk to the construction workers and learn what they're doing. We was on hand to see where taxpayer money's been spent. So, it was great and they gave us some good ideas. They gave us a long-term, a short-term, what can happen, what going to happen, and what the future looked like. And we right on hand to look at the problem, see what the problem was in the past and what it might be in the future. So, it was real great that we been on hand. So, thank you for doing that and making us have opportunity to answer. And I think them, they was very professional. They gave us a good view of what it looked like in our new center there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Ms. Adams.
I'm going to echo a lot of what Counselor Glenn said, but I too would like to thank the Chairman, Counselor McLean, for having the meeting there and having the opportunity to not just tour the facility, but meet with the contractors and subcontractors and see it first thing, you know, firsthand and have a, you know, dialogue directly with them. It was very insightful. I feel more comfortable moving forward. And I concur with the report, you know, of the longevity, hopefully of the building once everything is completed and it'll be money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have two resolutions. Resolution 313.
Authorizing and adopting a contribution form resolution for the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund.
Madam President.
Mr. Glenn.
Hold on one second here. Lost my place here. I move, I move a resolution.
Three.
Three. 313 adopted, has been read.
Received and filed and adopted. We're not, we don't.
Doesn't need received and filed.
You don't need it, it's needed adopted. That's all.
Not after having been read.
No. Is there a second?
Seconds.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution 313 be received and filed and adopted on its first reading. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oh, no, we have, yes, please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes. Resolution 313 has been adopted by a seven to nothing vote. Okay, I might have to go slower here. I see Mr. Baxter's here though. Good. Resolution 413.
Supporting the request for financial assistance for modifications of the CFNE rail crossing at Cape Road in Lima, Ohio.
Madam President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Resolution Number 413 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution 413 be adopted on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
No.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tebbin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
The resolution passes in a five to two vote.
It's got to go to a second reading.
It's got to go to a second.
Oh.
It needs six to be passed on first reading.
Okay, that's right. Put that on second reading. Resolution 413 will be placed on second reading. Okay, the ordinance, Ordinance 6513.
Leaving a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Madam President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 65 dash 13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance 6513 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes. The Ordinance 6513 has passed by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance 6613.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Madam President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 6613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance 6613 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes. Ordinance 6613 has passed by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance 6713.
Amending the 2013 annual budget.
Madam President.
Mr. Tebbin.
I move that Ordinance 6713 be passed on its first reading. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance 6713 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes. Ordinance 6713 has passed on its first reading by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance 6813.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Setfen Corporation to purchase a 2013 Setfen fire engine for the fire department.
Madam President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 6813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance 6813 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Neper.
Just one quick question. I know we had talked about this during the Finance Committee hearings this year. And I also am aware that the money is available, but I didn't know that we had moved forward with capital expenditures for this year. I thought we were going to get a mid-year update. And I just, I just wanted to be, I just wanted to, and I think that clearly everyone was supportive of purchasing the other truck. I just wanted to kind of speak on the record and say before we make future purchases, if we could just have that meeting for maybe the mid-year outlook like we did last year and make sure that, you know, so before we proceed with a large amount of capital expenditures, we make sure that finances are in line.
Does that require a response? I mean, do you want Mr. Claves to respond?
Just, if he, if he would, it doesn't require a response. Just going forward before we spend another half a million dollars or another $2 million on capital expenditures, just so we can take that second look like we did last year.
Madam President.
Mr.
That's our intention.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we vote?
No, we need to.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Don't throw me off again, Mr. Neper.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams.
Yes. Ordinance 6813 has passed by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance 6913.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Hazmat IQ.
Madam President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 6913 pass on its first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that Ordinance 6913 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-nine thirteen has passed by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance seventy thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Wales Avenue Waterline Replacement Project.
Madam President.
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance seventy thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance seventy thirteen be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon? Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy thirteen has passed by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance seventy-one thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to submit a transportation alternative grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Madam President.
Mr. Nieper?
I move that ordinance number seventy-one thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance seventy-one thirteen be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon? Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-one thirteen has passed by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance seventy-two thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Madam President.
Mr. Nieper?
I move that ordinance number seventy-two thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance seventy-two thirteen be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon? Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-two thirteen has passed by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance seventy-three thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to submit a Safe Rocks to School application to the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Madam President.
Mr. Nieper?
I move that ordinance number seventy-three thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance seventy-three thirteen be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Nieper?
Just a quick note, this project has been in the works at least since my coming on to this council and has required a great degree of cooperation between the Lima City School District and the city's Public Works Department. For those, for my constituents in the north end, the enhancements on and surrounding North Middle School would be a tremendous upgrade to what is currently there, both in terms of improving traffic flow as well as increasing the safety of students. So appreciate, you know, seeing this legislation this evening and I certainly hope that the state sees the value that we do here locally.
Thank you, Mr. Nieper. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon? Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-three thirteen passes by a seven to nothing vote. Ordinance seventy-four thirteen.
Establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Madam President.
Mr. Nieper?
I move that ordinance number seventy-four thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance seventy-four thirteen be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon? Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tebbin?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-four thirteen has passed by a seven to nothing vote. And with that, we'll have reports of officials, Mr. Baxter and Mr. Swick. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Bob Baxter and I'm the President and CEO of St. Rita's Health Partners. I live at forty fifty-three Cypress Avenue, Lima, Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. And I'm accompanied by Mike Swick from Lima Memorial Health System. And we're here to ask your consideration of an endorsement of the expansion of Medicaid in the state of Ohio. And so what I'd like to do, with your permission, is to give you a little bit of background on the Medicaid program and then Mr. Swick will be talking about some of the advantages of, of an expansion. As you're probably all familiar, and I'll be brief in my comments, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Medicaid expansion is a key component of the ACA or the Affordable Care Act, which, based on the Supreme Court decision this summer, every state has the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to, they want to expand eligibility. So the requirements for that or the potential impact of that is a Medicaid expansion would extend eligibility to the poor and needy up to one hundred and thirty-eight percent of the federal poverty guidelines. In the state of Ohio, there's about two point two million people enrolled in Medicaid and Medicaid typically covers about six, or accounts for about sixteen percent of the admissions in Ohio hospitals. An expansion of Medicaid would, estimates vary, but would impact about six hundred to six hundred and fifty thousand additional Ohioans who would receive coverage. In Allen County, the, the report, which is the Ohio Medicaid Expansion Study, which was done by OSU, the Health Policy Institute of Ohio, and the Urban Institute, would expand the number of people covered by five thousand six, by over fifty-six hundred individuals. So what I'm here to tell you is that an expansion of Medicaid would be good for uninsured Ohioans as well as good for the economy. Additional information about it is Medicaid covers about eighty-three percent of the cost of care in the state of Ohio. I'll tell you what, St. Rita's, our experience is similar, slightly less than that actually in terms of the amount of cost of services that's covered through Medicaid. However, eighty-three percent is better than not having any coverage whatsoever. Right now, the structure of the Medicaid expansion is that the federal government would cover one hundred percent of the cost of Medicaid expansion for the next two years. And beyond that, they would cover ninety percent of the cost of the newly enrolled or the Medicaid expansion. At St. Rita's Medical Center, as well as for Lima Memorial, Lima Memorial, we are by mission and by law required to and desired to provide necessary care for these individuals. As a result of those, of that care provided and for the lack of, the lack of payment associated with those services, those costs are borne by, by higher charges for those who have commercial insurance as well as loss of services potentially for Ohioans as a result of bearing the cost of coverage. Expansion of Medicaid is supported not only by the Ohio Hospital Association, it's also supported by the Medical Association and by the St. Rita's Medical Center Board as well as by Lima Memorial Health Systems Board. So with that, I'd, I'd give the microphone to Mr. Swick to speak more on the issue.
Thank you. Mike Swick, President and CEO, Lima Memorial Health System, four six five four Abnaki Trail, Lima, Ohio, four five eight oh five. Echoing what Bob was just talking about, locally, what it means to us isn't just dollars and cents, it's about the health of the community. When you look at what's going on right now with the uninsured, what happens is they, they seek the most expensive place to get their healthcare coverage taken care of. And that means typically the emergency room. If you can imagine when you don't have insurance, you're concerned about taking care of your kids or someone else, to have to go to the emergency room to get a physical done on your student or on your kid is just devastating because it's a matter of, that's the most expensive mechanism. Right now, how the hospitals take care of it, we eat the cost of that through our charity and bad debt. So it's a challenge for all of us to look at what we've got. The other part of it is preventative care. We very much view that if you expand this program to, to more individuals, they'll have access to primary care physicians, they'll have access to wellness. And if you remember, in the Lima News, just recently, they talked about how unhealthy Allen County is and how Lima falls in that category. It's a challenge for all of us to make sure that we're providing the best care. People who don't have insurance typically do not, do not go out and seek care until they're in a critical care state. And that typically means they're in the emergency room, which means they get admitted to the hospital. There's cost avoidance there that we can look at and reflect in terms of being able to make those changes. The other thing that's key is it keeps the dollars in Ohio. As Mr. Baxter said, it's key that we give back to the community and stuff and one of the ways is with the federal government being able to do that. You'll hear pushback sometimes that, well, you know, we don't know if the federal government will keep funding what the mechanism is. But right now, the concern the hospitals have is beginning in two thousand and fourteen, both hospitals will lose some of the funding that they get from the federal government for this charity and bad debt. It really, and when we looked at it at Lima Memorial, it pretty much offsets what the Medicaid expansion dollars are in order to be able to provide the services in this community. And the other big challenge is, you know, both hospitals are the largest employers in the community. It's an economic benefit for us to have the Medicaid expansion program. So at this point in time, what we're doing is we're really asking for your support to provide a resolution of support that you'd be willing to send to the legislators and to the governors, Governor of Ohio, to really support this program because we feel it's important for the community, not only just financially, but in terms of the health of the community we have here, giving people access to primary care physicians and other mechanisms. And I think Bob and I would be more than willing to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Madam President.
Mr. Glenn?
I'm a hundred and fifty percent behind it. You know, we got a lot of folks needed and like you just said, both Presidents say, most of the folks use the emergency room, there's a ton of money because they don't have the money, go to a doctor. And I see the folks, I live with the folks that go through this every day, who does not have, I'm blessed to have insurance. And mine is going up pretty high now, being a state employee, but yes, and I support this tremendously. Because I know folks out there who don't take the prostate test, who don't take the blood work due to them not having insurance. And I understand what the hospitals do, have to eat it up sometime when you use the emergency room for service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Any other questions for the gentleman?
And Mr. Glenn brings up a good point there, let me just add on to that, that in the event when charity care and bad debt goes up, what happens is both hospitals then cost shift that money over to the employers in the community. So everyone in this room is paying more because of that, because of that expense that goes with it. And as he said, our mission, our mission is to provide healthcare to anyone regardless of ability to pay. But in reality, if there's opportunities to this Medicaid expansion program to expand it, it's critical for us.
If I could just add to that, not only is the emergency department the most expensive place to receive care, but when a condition that could have been prevented or treated in physician's office through preventative services reaches the state where it needs to be treated in an, in an emergency department or in a hospital, we've missed an opportunity to actually reduce by preventative services the amount of care that's needed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration. Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Tebbin?
A question, I guess I would ask at this point is, is the expectation that we would have a motion tonight for such a resolution?
Indeed, from our benefit, it would be great if we could do it this evening because the legislation in the next week or so will be bringing forth or not bringing forth a budget that's supporting the governor's approach to it. So time is kind of of the essence from our perspective.
Thank you.
It's, Madam President.
Mr.
My understanding of the budget process is that it, it's not yet done. It's going to be coming out of the House at some point, then has to go over to the Senate. So I would think authorizing it tonight with action in two weeks would still meet the needs.
I agree with that.
Madam President.
Mr. Tebbin?
I would move that Lima City Council have such a resolution prepared.
Second.
There's a motion and second to prepare a resolution in support of the Medicaid expansion program in the state of Ohio. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, miscellaneous business. Mr. Glenn?
Madam President. We'll be having a meeting four fifteen, Monday four fifteen, at six thirty here. Harry Hotaway, six thirty in the chamber. Also, I'd like to appreciate the folks who helped me out and they get you guys' names. They helped out the alleys, helped clean out a couple alleys there. And also have been around and I called, saw about a couple about, about degrading the alleys, some of the areas. We went through twenty-five alleys. I noticed we're having good weather now and I hope that we can get to them. So I gave them a call, so I know some of the folks watching now and I told them I will bring this up to City Council. But so I returned the call, said he will be working on degrading some of the alleys. Also, we got a couple people, we still got some, some weeds that growed up, was grass. When code enforcement has stopped cutting, then we'll begin reporting, they are reported. So we will be taking some action on them areas too. So a lot of things there, a lot of cosmetic things need to be done. And had opportunity to get around to a lot of places. We'll be getting around the rest of this week, checking out some of the things there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mr. Nieper?
I'd just like to make a motion that we approve President Nixon's absence and salary for this evening.
Second.
Second. Motion and second to approve Mr. Nixon's salary and absence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nieper. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to remind everyone, the Northside Neighborhood Association is going to have a meeting on the sixteenth. That's at St. Geraghty's Parish Hall, seven P.M. And we had a, a gathering, I guess you can call it, this weekend called the Warrior Mode. That was quite unique for our city. I didn't get involved with it until a little bit too late, but my wife was and I tell you, she was impressed. The, the people that were involved in it, it's more of a charitable event and it was designed for like a scavenger hunt type thing. It was really unique and I hope that they continue that next year and, and build on it because there was a lot of local businesses involved, a lot of local people involved in it, it just brought a good community feel. So everyone missed it, find out from someone who was in it or saw it because they, they think it was really great. That's all I have here.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to announce that tomorrow evening, we will have the East Side Neighborhood Association meeting at seven P.M. at Forest Park Church, that's located at three fifteen Collins Avenue. We're asking if you, particularly this meeting, if you have any questions on your billing as far as the water department goes. We will have Mr. Mike Caprella out that evening for someone of that department to answer some, forgot about me, did you? To answer some questions for you. So I ask that you bring your bill with you so that you can have a complete understanding of the billing system. We also will have the young lady, Juliana from Guiding Light, speaking, letting you know the good impact that she has brought to the community as far as teen pregnancy goes and a place for those young ladies to stay. I would ask, also, I just want to bring this to attention, Mr. Elstro has his ears on here. I was in Cross Lumber today and I noticed that you are headed south on Jackson Street. Cross Lumber sits on the northwest corner. There are kids are constantly crossing that street right there from Lima Senior High School. And there's no signage that says no right turn. But it's on, if you're on Market Street, it, there's signage east and west, but there's nothing north and south. And I'd hate for one of those young kids to get hit somebody not paying attention and make a right turn on the red. So if we could, if we could possibly get some signage or talk with Mr. Nieper. That's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tebbin?
A couple of things this evening. The Boulevard Neighborhood Association, which holds their meetings at fourteen forty West Spring, formerly Fire Station Number Four, for Citywide Pride, on Saturday, May fourth, from nine A.M. till noon, will have a dumpster at that location. No hazardous material or large appliances can be received at that site. Also, there will be on Tuesday, May fourteenth, at seven o'clock, same location, the City Focus Meeting with the mayor and his staff. And on Monday, May twenty-seventh, same location, fourteen forty West Spring, the Lack nip chicken barbecue fundraiser will take place from eleven A.M. until two P.M. So there will be more information on all these, but the Community Resource Center is getting put to very good use.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tebbin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Madam President. Midway East Neighborhood Association will be meeting a week from Thursday on the eighteenth at seven P.M. at their center on Kivvy. I too would like to call a meeting for next Monday, the fifteenth, at five thirty of the Community and Economic Development Committee. We will continue the discussion on the junk auto, abandoned auto that's already in the committee and, and the new subject of signage and regulations that was referred at the last council meeting to the committee. We can begin a discussion on that as well. This Friday is the deadline to sign up for a dumpster for the Citywide Pride cleanup. And if you haven't done so to reserve one, call the neighborhood support at two two one five one seven seven. I happened to attend the open house yesterday at the new Resource Center on Spring Street and was very impressed and a lot of hard work went into renovating that and equipping that with furniture and equipment. And I think it'll be a great asset not only for Lack nip board going forward, but also for the communities as well. Also coming up is community garden training, interest, if you have that, they're going to be holding at the Resource Center on four forty West Spring Street, April sixteenth at seven P.M. You need to register, so call two two one five one seven seven to get your name in there and attend those training classes. Reserve a spot. They now have five locations, there's a new one, which will also be at the Resource Center, a garden there. I've had one across the street from where I live at Freedom. It's a great asset to the neighbors that have partaked in that and have grown their own vegetables and share them with other neighbors as well. Also, Ottawa River Cleanup is coming up Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at the Red Cross, Allen County Chapter Building on College Street. You'll get your assignments there, that runs from nine A.M. till noon. And if you would like to partake in that, please show up that day and volunteer and